Bowling Green, Warren County Planning and Zoning Commission into order tonight for August the 19th, 2021. Monica, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Drain?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
You have the minutes from our last meeting in your packet, commissioners that were sent to you. If there are any changes or corrections, then if none, I would ask for a motion.
I'm moved. Second.
Thank you. Monica.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Monica.
Yes, sir.
Hamp, if you will call for the hearing of our record of our comp plan zoning ordinance and...
Thank you.
Okay.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry. What?
I said I didn't need the interruption. I'm sorry. I request that you order that the record tonight include all statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications of each staff witness. Finally, I request that you administer those to those witnesses.
Y'all swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. You have your subdivision and site development plans in our packet. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. There's no old business, so we move into our public hearing. The first item tonight is docket 2113 DP. The Point Peachtree LLC and Riya La Maxi Scottsville Road LLC have filed an application to amend the general development plan, development plan conditions on tracks containing approximately 6.8 acres located at 5833 and 5851 Scottsville Road. These properties are zoned highway business with the general development plan. So, Zach?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-app on July 8th of the property C outlined in yellow. The existing zoning is HB or highway business. Whoops. The existing land use is commercial. The future land use is also commercial. The applicants are proposing to amend the general development plan approved in 2019 for 6.8 acres located at 5833 and 5851 Scottsville Road in order to change permitted hours of operation, allow split face block as a permitted material for dumpster enclosures, and increase the maximum height for freestanding signage. If you'll flip over to your second page of staff report, we've got our description for the commercial future land use map category. We've got several items noted in the site characteristics review. I can go over any of those you like. Also, several items in the site design and compatibility. I'll draw attention to the building materials review. That the current DPCs require the building facades of all buildings within 100 feet, 150 feet of Scottsville Road shall be 70% brick, ephist, stone, or modern masonry or cementous material. And then that tapers back to 50% beyond 150 feet from Scottsville Road. And that plain face block shall not be used as a visible exterior finish material on any building. The applicants are proposing to amend the DPCs to allow split face block as permitted material for dumpster enclosures, and we'll touch on that a little more in a minute. Then we can look down at signage. That the current DPCs require that freestanding signs shall be monument style and limited to 15 feet in height and 150 square feet of sign area with no LED signage permitted. And applicants are requesting to amend that permitted height for freestanding signs from 15 to 22 feet. And there's a rendering right there for your convenience. We can look down at the area-specific policy review. This is part of the Scottsville Road corridor study, and we've identified a couple policies or recommendations for your consideration. I will highlight the second one that says a requirement that all new signage be monument style with a lower square footage cap as well as prohibiting LED signs. Again, the current DPCs require that freestanding signs shall be limited to 15 feet in height and no more than 150 square feet. And again, they're requesting to increase that to 22 feet in height while keeping the sign face area the same. Flip over to the next page to the general development plan conditions. I can touch on any of me like, but I'm just going to highlight the ones that are changing. There's a slight amendment to number two, which deals with access that each lot now, instead of the property, shall have one access point to Scottsville Road. Signage, which we just mentioned, increasing to 22 feet in height. Building exteriors, there was some language added that if masonry is used for dumpster screening, masonry walls shall be subject to the same material requirements as are the principal buildings, provided, however, that painted split face block shall be allowed for such dumpster screening walls. And then on the next page, there's an amendment to the hours of operation going from 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM. Now it's going to be 5:00 AM to 1:00 AM. There's some references from the zoning ordinance that an amendment to any development plan condition for an approved development plan shall be approved only if the amendment remains consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and those findings listed below. An applicant submitted a narrative for your review, and I can read that if you guys like. And then in your focus 2030 category review on the next page, we've got nine items that staff identified, two of which comply, and seven of which are up to the planning commission's determination. If there's no questions so far, we can flip back to page one, point to consider if the proposed amendment remains consistent with the flume and the commercial category, if the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and a majority of the review criteria for site design. And then the third one being that the planning commission should determine if the proposed development plan amendment to change permitted hours of operation, allow split face block as a permitted material for dumpster enclosures, and increase the maximum height for freestanding signage is compatible with the surrounding area, if the proposed changes have met the intent of the Scottsville Road corridor study, and if the applicants have addressed the findings required to amend the general development plan. And that's all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Zach. Commissioners, any questions for Zach?
Zach, if I'm looking at the aerial, have they already put a second entrance road in?
Um, if we go back to that, it does look like it.
I may clarify that. One thing that isn't very clear...
Would you come to the microphone? They can't hear us on the...
One thing that's not super clear in the staff report is that these parcels were rezoned separately. So, right now, there are two sets of development plan conditions. So, each lot is permitted one access point, but this application consolidates both lots under one set of conditions. So, even though it makes it seem like they're adding an extra access point, they're really just... It's functioning the same. It's just that it'll be under one condition, set of conditions, two access points, one property versus now it's one access point per property, two sets of conditions.
Makes sense. And then, Zach, the purpose of going to 22 feet is...
You can see in the rendering what the applicants have planned. They mentioned a couple things that they're limited in the total width due to setback restrictions in the underground utilities. And then they... I'll let the applicants touch on it more, but they wanted to get more on the sign.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Zach, I may have missed this, but what's the reasoning for the time change?
With... I'll let the applicants, again, touch on that more in a second, but with the business that they're proposing going in there, it just, I think it made more sense for them to open an hour earlier.
Thank you, Zach. Any other questions for Zach? Hearing none. Is the applicant here or the representative?
Both.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Mr. Brooks, your address, and you swear to tell the truth.
1649 Chestnut Street, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Kevin Brooks, and I do represent the applicant. I'm hoping that you all have seen this development out on Scottsville Road. It's a real handsome, brand-new development that we are proud of. And with me tonight is Chris Gerhart, and I may let him help us answer some of these questions that we've already heard. I will at least preliminarily say, and I think Chris will say more, that... Well, I really want to compliment his development because this is kind of his first rodeo. And so, for a first development, I think it looks really good, and I think you will hear that maybe some of these requests would have been in the original set if he had sort of understood a thing or two. And so, Mr. Starks, I'll answer your question. The hours of operation is really simple. One of their new tenants that they did not have at the time is The Q, the same restaurant that is out on Nashville Road, and it's a coffee breakfast place, and they want to open at 5:00 in the morning. So, I probably won't be there at 5:00 in the morning, but good for them. So, there is that one. And then maybe to answer the other two, I might call Chris Gerhart, just for a couple of quick questions.
Mr. Gerhart, will you state your address, your name and your address, please, sir?
Yes, Chris Gerhart. Address is 8675 Drake's Boulevard, Alveton, Kentucky, 42122.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Gerhart, first of all, is the answer I gave about the hours of operation the right answer? Is that why we're doing that? Yes, that is. That's to support Q who opens at 5:00 at their current location as well. So, we've got really just two other changes. And one of them has to do with dumpster enclosures. And I think there was a misunderstanding at the hearing, not on your part or the staff's part, or probably on Mr. Gerhart's part, about that. And I'll just let you explain what, why we're asking for this change. So, we do recognize the building materials requirements that we agreed to. We want the development to look nice out in that area, and so we were happy to agree to use some nice materials on our buildings. What we didn't understand, I think, at the time was that a dumpster screening would maybe be rolled up into that same requirement. The staff helped clarify that for us as we were trying to understand going forward. So, now that we understand that, the... With the dumpster screening, we think that a block, block walls that are painted to match the colors of the development are a good functional, durable, but also attractive way to block those dumpsters. We also have some vegetation actually already planted in landscaping that will help on certain, on the sides that are, that face residential areas with the dumpsters as well in addition to the block walls that we'd like to build. So, that's really what we're trying to achieve, is something that looks nice with some durable materials. So, was kind of the key misunderstanding that had to do with the definition of the word "building," and you didn't understand that a dumpster screen was a building? Correct. Yeah, we understood that that might be maybe considered a wall or a fence rather than a building. And then the question about signage, the application says a little bit about it, but again, as you began to do this development, what did you discover which led you to the need for a sign that's a little seven feet taller? So, what we found is, as we're looking at the requirements, that we know we, the front edge of the sign has to be at least 20 feet setback off the roadway of Scottsville Road. And then it also can't be constructed over the top of underground utility lines. And as we got into looking at our options for signs, we found that there's only really 12 feet of space up in the area near the road between those two constraints. And so, with that limitation on the width of the sign, and this being a multi-tenant development, with the number of tenants that we kind of have planned for this, we know that we need to use the square footage of the sign and really are, the only way to go is to get a little bit taller so that we can make sure that we get enough square footage on the sign for, you know, possibly as many as 30 or more tenants on this site. All right. That's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Commissioners, any questions?
So, Mr. Gerhart, it sounds like your sign, the square footage of the sign will be the same. It will simply be configured differently. Is that correct?
That's correct. We are not proposing to increase the square footage of the sign face itself. We're only proposing to give ourselves a little bit more height so that we can get that square footage within the limited width that we can construct a sign.
Stood. And so, if we could, let's circle back to the dumpster screening. Would it be accurate to say that this dumpster screen is already built?
No, sir, it's not.
It's not? Okay. And so, what is the exterior facade of the rest of the structure?
So, the current building, there's one of multiple proposed buildings currently constructed on the site. That structure is built primarily of brick, metal, and ephist.
And so, is it your thought that a split face block is more durable in some way than a brick veneer wall?
We believe so. It's where it can be painted, we think that it, the paint can easily be touched up if something bumps it, something like that.
I see. So, in that respect, it would end up being more durable so you could paint it over, paint it again over some period of time rather than the brick, which you might have the ability to do.
Correct. Yeah, a brick may have to be replaced if it was damaged.
Approximately how long is this wall?
So, these, there are actually three separate dumpster areas on this development, but two of them are big enough to accommodate double dumpsters, and so I believe the width would be around 20 feet, and the two sides would be around 12 feet. Thank you.
Is it, I mean, is one of the reasons you're asking to do this, is it from a cost standpoint?
That's part of it, but also functionality as well.
Okay. Because, I mean, a brick, likelihood of ever having to do anything to brick is not likely. I mean, from a painting of a split face, I mean, that could be a yearly maintenance, depending on the wear and tear. So, that's why I was asking the question. This is, of course, the decision that you've made, and there's a reason you're asking us this, but just understanding it from a logistic perspective, it sounds as if you'd have more maintenance with the split face block than you would with the brick exterior. And that's the other reason I ask, how big is this structure? This is a fairly minimal cost. I'm great with all the other things you're asking for. I mean, I understand the hours, and I understand the signage and all that, but from where I'm sitting, I think from the beautification of the project, better off if it's all matching and it's a brick. I would agree as well. Is there something we're overlooking here? Because you actually, you correct me if I'm wrong. If you had to paint that split face block regularly, whereas you would not have to paint brick, you would actually end up with more money in the split face block than with the brick. Split face block, it could be argued that you don't have to paint it, but you're going to have to paint it in order to make it look attractive initially. With brick, you don't have to paint it at all, and so you don't have that initial cost, and you also don't have that continued maintenance as you go forward. So, unless we're overlooking something, it sounds as if you may ultimately be better served to consider brick for this facade. I don't want to talk you out of this, and I don't want to, I want to make sure that there's not something that we're overlooking, but given an opportunity, it would certainly look more attractive if you did it out of brick. And your cost here, if we talk about cost for brick veneer for 20, 30, 40, 50, let's call it 80 linear feet of wall, you're going to spend more money painting this thing than you are installing brick, if I understand correctly. So, either of you chime in here.
Let me just make one observation. First, I'll observe at the substantial disadvantage I have in discussing building materials with you.
Stood.
But I want to say, and I don't say this in any argumentative sense, but I don't want you to think if we walk out of here that he's not following what the commission wants. He doesn't have to do masonry at all. Okay? He can do, he can do a wooden fence enclosure, he can do, he could do, so there are other things that he can do, just... Your point is the difference between split face block and brick, and I kind of think we understand what you're saying.
Those two are just so close to one another. If you do a regular CMU block, not split-faced, and you add a brick veneer to it, certainly it costs more, but it's for such a small square footage, it's not significant. And so, I don't know if you've considered that or not, but going forward, you might have a different maintenance cost. So, that's something you guys may...
We actually considered a bunch of things before we filed this, and so if the commission would give us about one minute to talk about this a little bit, and we'll be right back. Is that all right?
Kevin, I'm not a fan of split, split face.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. That split face will absorb that paint, I mean, over a year's period with the weather, I mean, it will, I mean, that will, I mean, it'll eat, that split face will eat it. Oh, can't do that? Oh. You know, I was just asking a question. Nah. I'm pretty much used to it, people telling me what I've done wrong.
and so we just reconsidered them and decided that we'll just eliminate the request for that. So, I think, Mr. Moore, we would just take out that phrase that begins with "provided, however," the underlying part just comes out, and we're good. Am I right, Rachel? Okay. So, that's what we propose.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Thank you, Mr. Gerhart. Any other questions for Mr. Brooks or Mr. Gerhart from commissioners? Is there anyone in the audience that has opposition to this request? Hearing none, would call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, docket number 202113 DP, based upon the testimony documented in this public hearing. Proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan. It's demonstrated by its compliance and objective action items presented in the staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes of economic, physical, social nature within the area of the property in question, and I request the findings and fact and recommendation include a summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Monica.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved. Thank you all for your time tonight.
The second item tonight is docket 202149 Z County. Emily Leeper and Howard Terry and Marilyn Howell Leeper have filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 4.3209 acres located at 3930 Cumberland Trace Road from agriculture to RM2 family residential to RR rural residential and to RM2 family residential with the general development plan. And we will ask for Rachel.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application conference on May 7th for the property you just described on Cumberland Trace Road. You can see that the current zoning of the property is split ag and RM2. A portion of the property is also in the floodplain. The current use of the property is single-family residential, and the future land use is actually from the cemetery road overlay, and it is split between large single-family residential, small single-family residential, or duplex. So, it's kind of a different category than we're used to seeing because it's in the special focal point plan from Cemetery Road. The request this evening is to rezone the property in order to subdivide the property into two lots. You'll see each of the lots kind of shaded, shaded, one in green and one in red. The existing residence is proposed to remain, and there's a new residence that's proposed on the red lot. Looking, I'm going to kind of skip over the site characteristics and site design, but I'll be happy to go over any of that in detail if needed. But I'm going to look at the area-specific policy review for the Cemetery Road focal point plan. There were two applicable policies. First, CRC 1, which looks at the future land use map, and then second, CRC 2, which looks at compatibility. So, the planning commission should determine compliance with those items. Looking at the development plan conditions, there are 12. Number one sets the maximum number of lots at two. Number two addresses onsite septic systems. Three sets the minimum home size at 2,200 square feet of heated and cooled living space, exclusive of garages and porches. Four requires at least a two-car garage. Five addresses building materials. Six looks at foundation materials. Seven, preservation of existing vegetation. Eight deals with access to the property. Nine looks at sinkholes and wetlands. Ten addresses building orientation. Eleven prohibits mobile or manufactured homes. And 12 sets the minimum open space per lot at 70%. Under the focus 2030 category review, the staff evaluated 18 items. We found nine of those items to be in compliance. Nine items are up to the planning commission to evaluate for compliance, the first being LU 1.1.1 and 1.1.2, and LU 1.1.3, which look at the future land use map and compatibility. Next, LU 2, which looks at quality of development and character of the area. Next, LU 2.8 and 2.8.1, which look at those Cemetery Road corridor policies. And then jumping down to the bottom, HN 1.3, which evaluates whether or not the development will strengthen nearby properties and districts. And last, HN 2.1 and HN 4, which look at housing options and suitability of the housing location. Again, on the staff review summary, the applicants are requesting to rezone the property in order to subdivide one additional lot for one additional home. And wrapping up with the points to consider on page one, the planning commission should determine compliance with the future land use map and the policies outlined in the Cemetery Road corridor policy plan. Second, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with exceptions noted regarding water availability. And third, the proposed development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and compatibility and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hart?
Rachel, the new house will be on sewer.
No, there's actually not sewer available in this area. This is kind of an old, weird area where we've got some RM2 zoning, but, um, that there's just no sewer availability. So, kind of strange, uh, but both, uh, homes would be on septic and have a site evaluation, uh, the new home would have a site evaluation from the health department before, uh, permit.
Did we help the applicant with, um, with the general development plan conditions?
Uh, we offered suggestions. I believe our email is probably attached.
So, the reason I'm asking is we've, we've included wood on the exterior, and, and that's such a generic term that it opens us up to possibly some undesirable products. So when the applicant comes up, I may see if we can switch that to like LP smart siding or something. That's probably what they have in mind, but...
We did discuss that. Um, and then ultimately what was submitted is what is in your package.
They do want wood? Okay, all right, fair enough. All right.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Uh, any other questions for Rachel? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, the applicants are here. If somebody is a spokesperson, if you'd like to make comments?
I'm good unless you all have further questions.
Would you please come to the microphone, just one of you, that'd be fine. Could you state your name?
Emily Leeper.
And your address?
Uh, 280 Shekarmil Ben Road, Bowling Green, Kentucky, 42103.
Swear to tell the truth.
I swear.
Thank you very much. Uh, commissioners, any questions?
Um, so, Ms. Leeper, um, tell us a little bit about what exterior material you, um, you anticipated when we list, uh, wood as a, um...
Um, LP siding or, um, the, uh, hardy board, something like that. I do plan on building like a deck.
That's okay.
So I think I'd ask Rachel if that means, you know, so maybe that's, you know...
That's okay. So, um, so if I may, can I offer a couple of things? It looks like a very nice home next door to it, and I'm, I'm, it's, I'm sure it's not your intent to introduce some undesirable materials here. So, um, would, uh, if we talk about hardy plank, that is a cementitious material, and it's covered in the last part of this.
Okay.
And so would you be okay if we substitute, uh, LP smart siding for the word "wood" here? And that lets you do basically whatever you want without introducing things like, um, plywood veneers and undesirable products.
Okay.
You're okay with that?
Uh, yes, yes. Um, if I wanted to have like, like, uh, wooden posts or something in the front, you know, that...
Absolutely, yeah. We're only talking, only talking about the veneers.
Okay, yes, that's fine. I'm, I'm perfectly fine.
Okay. And, uh, and so...
So, wood is gonna be included for, uh, DPC number five, and, and in its place substituted LP smart siding.
That's correct. Mm-hmm. And do we, do we need to ask, do we need to ask?
We need to ask, Ms. Leeper, you, are you agreeable with that?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Emily, are you agreeable with that change?
Yes, that's fine.
And do you speak on behalf of, of the rest of the owners?
Uh, I'm the, yeah, yes, I'm the owner. That's my parents, they're the house in green, so...
Anybody who disagrees with her, uh, speak now.
Well, it's not worth the trouble.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Commissioners, I guess we don't have any other questions. Are there anybody in opposition to this request tonight? Hearing none, would call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with the condition upon the general development plan. Docket number 202149Z Company, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focused comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance and objective action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public...
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Motion is approved. Thank you all for your time tonight. Is there any other new business tonight? Ben?
No new business. I think we, uh, I'll just mention that, I guess we continue to monitor the, the COVID situation, the increase, as well as any, uh, potential mandates. I think tonight, uh, we were able to spread out and kind of employ, employ the, if you're comfortable with who you're sitting next to and have your vaccination and, and you're okay, uh, situation. But we will continue to monitor that, and of course, we'll have to, uh, adjust, uh, as necessary if any, any new mandates, uh, come our way. Uh, we have been asked about going back to Zoom meetings. Uh, we were a, only able to do that, uh, last time due to the, basically the governor's executive order, which, uh, permitted, uh, video teleconferences being an option for people to be seen and heard. Uh, so short of that, we will, uh, we will continue to meet in person. Um, and, uh, you know, as far as whether masks will be required, or as it is tonight, uh, we'll, we'll plan on continuing as we did tonight. Uh, if the room starts to, starts to fill up, which we think will be okay, our next meeting as well, I think we only have two or, two or three items next meeting?
One got withdrawn, so we have one.
Oh, one got withdrawn, so we only got one, so we should be okay our next meeting. Uh, the September, I think it's 16th meeting, um, probably be a little, little bit heavier, uh, workload on you, on you that meeting, and we'll, we'll just have to kind of see and continue to monitor the situation. But we're, we're, uh, doing the best we can, and if it seems like we're making it up as we go, it's because we are. But we're, we're just have to stay fluid and, and, uh, react how we can and do what we can.
Thank you, Ben.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments for Ben? Is there any other discussion items, uh, for tonight?
Um, that picture on the front line, that was postponed.
I, I am so sorry. I should have announced that. That has been postponed till when, Rachel?
There's no date set yet. It, it will be re-advertized, so we need letters, have the newspaper sign, now and then.
I, I'm so sorry, ma'am. Should have announced that at the very beginning, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Do you do a sign, like, oh?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It will, it will, it will be advertised.
Was there a sign in there for a lifetime?
There was for like 30 minutes, and then we pulled it up because we found out that...
Uh, sorry for y'all, y'all's inconvenience tonight, sir. Um, so there's no, no other discussion items, then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here tonight.